...fourteen at nine AM. Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan. Mrs. Harancunso. Mr. Jones. Mr. Kwiatowski. Mr. Mersky. Mr. Winarsky. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, we ask that we remember all those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are in any, in every way. Remember those that have lost loved ones, uh, excuse me, since the last time we were in these chambers. And remember all those again that in this time when we're all thankful and appreciative of our gifts, uh, remember those who have less than we do and, uh, find a way to be a blessing to them. We also finally ask that our God and Creator give us the wisdom and the information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes for the meeting of November nineteenth, twenty fourteen, and bills for payment on December fifth and twelfth, twenty fourteen. Mr. Brennan. Mrs. Harancunso. Mr. Jones. Mr. Kwiatowski. Mr. Mersky. Mr. Winarsky.
Are there anyone here for repository sales? Are there anyone here for repository sales? Are there anyone here for repository sales? Here are none. Citizens to be heard. Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good morning, Council President, Council Administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, one oh nine Walton Pointe, Erie, Pennsylvania. I don't envy you, uh, seven council people. You've got tough decisions to make, uh, regarding this tax increase or proposed tax increase coming on the heels of a large use tax last year that was passed. I guess one of the things you, uh, need to look at is, uh, people always say, "Oh, how do you eat an elephant?" Well, you have to eat it one bite at a time. So you have to look at what, what positions exist today that didn't exist a year ago? And are those positions necessary? And are those positions reducing, reducing the, uh, the deficit, having that position there? What productivity are we getting from that position? Good example is the position of archivist. A year ago, we didn't have an archivist. A year ago today. In fact, even in, uh, in the memorandum on Friday, March seventh, from, uh, Mel Witherspoon to Mayor Senate and great, uh, Solicitor Carley, there was no mention of any archivist. So I think we have a new position this year as an archivist. Now, maybe the thought is this archivist can archive these records and reduce manpower by one. Is that the goal of council that at the end of this two years, we'll be able to reduce the, uh, the clerk's office from three people down to two? Is that the payback we get for paying this archivist for raising taxes to pay for positions we didn't have a year ago? Raising taxes to pay for positions we didn't have a year ago? We didn't have an archivist a year ago. So you're faced with raising taxes to pay for an archivist. What productivity gains? What has the archivist done to affect the bottom line since August first? How much have we reduced the budget that we have to have to run the city because we've had an archivist since August first? We did hear that the archivist now has another responsibility. He's going to be on the, uh, Water Reserve Investment Finance Committee. That was to help council prepare a request for proposal. I want to ask, is this the first ever request for proposal done in the history of the city of Erie, Pennsylvania? Now, do these requests for proposals usually get advice from the city clerk? Because if that's the case, I think you'd have to look at number five in the contract. Under no circumstance will the contractor, Mr. Clem, perform any duties or responsibilities of the personnel employed in the office of city clerk. Well, it seemed like it was a good idea, you know, and Mr. Clem said, "You know, I'm going to stay on another year because Mr. Winarsky asked me to stay on another year, and then I'm going to retire." It was probably a good idea at the time, say, "Hey, you know, we could, we could use you back here. We've got these archived records. You've been here for forty-eight years. We've got these records that are a mess. We get these records straightened out. It would really help us out a lot. Instead of having a whatever million-dollar deficit, we'll have a, something less than a million-dollar deficit, whatever it is." And then we went on and then, and people, uh, the newspaper helped out a little bit and this guy by the name of Barnes kept talking about it. And all of a sudden, well, we had to come up with a contract. Of course, you have to have a contract. On September thirtieth, three months after, four months after the vote, there was no contract. It wasn't until October that we had a contract for the archivist that we have to raise taxes to pay for because we didn't have that position a year ago. Did we? No, we didn't. Three council people thought they could get along without an archivist. They thought this was ridiculous. This was a, a luxury. A luxury to have an archivist. Because those three council people saw ahead what was going to happen. And I think those same three council people can see ahead to the next year because you know what? You've got to pay all your staff and all the, the count, police and firemen, all people raises next year, don't you? When are those raises going to come up? Those guys, you're going to have to have another tax increase. So three council people knew that, you know, spending twelve thousand dollars on a position we didn't have was probably not the brightest thing to do. And I appreciate those three council people for seeing clear past the politics. Past the politics. A given, and I'm fifty-eight, so anybody older than me is, I'm old, everybody older than I am is old, so given politics, old retired white guys giving a little kicker besides the sixty-eight thousand pension the man earned. And he earned that pension. And I thank you very much, and, and I do hope you consider taking little chunks out of that elephant. Every chunk helps. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Julia Calippo. I live at two thirty-five East Thirty-second Street. I'm a resident here in Erie. And today I am here about an off-task subject, and that subject would be the Erie City Schools. It's our obligation to care and, and to really interact with them because as politicians, you guys, you know, you have the power to go out there and speak to people and make change that needs to take place here in the city of Erie. I'm here about Wilson Middle School. My son, Jackson, is a student there. There is a problem with failing schools here in the city of Erie. Our taxes pay for education. It's not a welfare program. You know, you don't have to apply to it and only certain people are eligible. My property taxes and your property taxes pay for our kids to get an education. It's supposed to be safe, nondiscriminatory, and fair for every child. Um, I spoke at a recent, uh, school board meeting in November, and I basically stated that my son was having a lot of problems with unfair treatment with his principal and assistant principal, and, uh, the principal's name is Mr. Orlando. I called them bullies. And, you know, I think that that is a, a good way to term it. When my son spends more of his day in the office for uniform violations than the education he gets, there's a problem there. You know, um, it shouldn't matter what uniform you wear or whether your shirt's tucked in. You know, um, you know, there's a little bit of behavior problems with Jackson, so that's a given. But, uh, you know, at that meeting afterwards, I was approached by Thomas Spiegel, who stated, "Uh, you should not call the principal a bully," and that Erica Irwin from the Times News was there, and she heard everything I said. And he said, "Your son's behavior leads me to think that you're not doing your job as a parent." And I've kind of flipped out a little. And I said, "You know what? My son has a mobile therapist, and he has all the therapies he can possibly need, and I reached out for any kind of community resources, you know, we're members at different places." And, you know, that's a different issue from the school uniform. I said, "Your, your school's failing. They're not performing. You're financially causing hardship upon people who some people can't even afford food. They can't afford to pay the utilities. There's homeless. We've, we've got all kinds of homeless. We even have a homeless program through the Erie City School District." You know, now, we're going to break this down according to, um, demographics. In Wilson Middle School on Twenty-sixth Street, forty-seven percent is black, twenty-nine percent is white, and eighty-six percent are economically disadvantaged. Their enrollment is almost eight hundred. It's like seven, seven fifty-four. Okay? So let's think about that. So if you're black and you go to Wilson, you're most likely to not get an education. That's just a fact. There's only a fifty-eight percent building score for the school of Wilson, and that's distressing. You know, these, these kids, they can't afford food. They can't afford shoes, let alone they're supposed to buy school uniforms, and then they lose part of their day being punished by detentions, suspensions, and office requests about uniforms. You know, and the child matters, not what you're wearing. Even in a job setting, you know, yeah, your suit looks nice, you know, you look, you know, you're looking sexy. But you know what? That's not going to help you get a better job. That's not going to change the kind of person you are. It's, it's based on how you work and how you interact with people. I actually started a Facebook page. It's called Wilson Watch Dogs. And I shared the story of my son, Jackson, and the strife that he struggled with, um, about all the detentions he's gotten, um, that he's gotten. His lunch taken away. He's had middle-table detention. And it's distressed me to the point that I actually filed a complaint with the USDA because they were using denial of lunches or, or a time limit on your lunch as part of a punishment, which is illegal because that's misappropriation of funds. Um, I am, uh, I want people to know that there are kids that are being denied their lunch. I want people to know that I filed a complaint with the USDA in regards to that, that kids are being punished on a daily basis for not having the right clothes on. Now, we do have a caring closet. You can get free clothes. Okay? But that's just based on donation. If people don't donate it, or it's not your size, you, you don't get it. You know what I mean? And, and that's not fair because, once again, education is the whole focus of the city school. It's not what your clothes are. Um, and a lot of people, parents need to come out. They need to reach out for the resources. File your complaints with the USDA. File your complaint with the State Board of Education because the state will listen if the city will not. If they will violate your First Amendment right, limit your freedom of speech or whatever, and they don't want to listen, go to your state entities. We have a new governor going in. We need some funds coming in here for some Erie City Schools. Let's, you know, call Mr. Wolf and say, "Hey, let's get some funds in here." And by the way, you know, this uniform thing is discriminatory. You know, and that was my topic today, and I'm hoping-
Excuse me. That's the timer. Your time's up.
Yes. And thank you so much, Mr. Witherspoon, and hopefully you guys are going to take the time to get involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Dan Zimieski. I live at, uh, two thirteen West Seventeenth Street in the city. Um, I'm here to try to shed light on a very confusing situation, um, hopefully to motivate the individuals involved to do the right thing. Um, on October twenty-third through twenty-six, Ringling Brothers, um, brought their cruelest show to Erie. Um, I joined about, um, thirty, um, citizen demonstrators, um, to help try to bring attention to the cause, um, versus the wild animals. Um, on, on that, on the first day of the protest, October twenty-third, um, we were confronted by, um, Convention Center security, um, claiming they had a sidewalk permit that we weren't allowed to be there, um, that we had to leave. Didn't really make sense to us. Um, I took a picture of the, um, the permit itself at that time with my cellphone. On the twenty-fourth, Friday, it was late on Thursday, of course, on the twenty-fourth, um, I tried to call David Rocco to learn more about this, this sidewalk permit. It was a vendor's permit. Um, he, um, I received his voicemail. Um, I came and I left a message. I did stop in here as well and left a note in his door, um, hoping he would get back to me before the end of the business day. Um, I guess he was taking a vacation day, so he was unable to. Come next Monday, he did return my phone call. He left a very long-winded voicemail, um, which really didn't have anything to do with what I was trying to contact him about. It's, um, it was very confusing, to be honest. Um, so, um, the next day, on the twenty-eighth, I decided that I should just file a formal right-to-know request. That way it would be clear what information I was looking for and what I wanted to know. On November fifth, um, I received a denial. It was six business days after I filed the right-to-know request. So for one, right-to-know request is supposed to be responded to in five days. For some reason, um, they took six. Not a big deal in the grand scheme of things. Um, what is a big deal is my request was denied. Um, it was denied on the basis Connie Cook, um, right-to-know officer claimed that the documents did not exist, um, which was kind of a head-scratcher to me because I have photographic evidence that the document does indeed exist. At that point, I wasn't sure what to do. In the meantime, um, we, the, the group of the citizen demonstrators had an attorney draft a letter to Casey Wells telling him that what he did was unconstitutional, um, and, um, basically giving him notice that we knew what he did was wrong and not to do it again. That was delivered to him on November seventeenth, and interestingly enough, the very next day, I, I received a phone call from Dave Rocco. And he asked me if I got the information that I needed, and I said, "No, I didn't. I didn't get any information." In fact, my, my right-to-know request was denied. Um, his response was he didn't know anything about the right-to-know request, interestingly enough, even though it was addressed to him specifically, um, which doesn't make any sense. Um, it seems, uh, Ms. Cook took it upon herself to deny the request without, I'm, I'm really, I don't know. I really don't know, and this is all just, uh, guesswork here at this point. I spoke with David Rocco on November eighteenth for about fifteen minutes, explaining to him that I had filed a right-to-know request, what information I was looking for, that I hadn't received it. Um, he continued to claim to know nothing about it whatsoever. So at that point, I, I, I was under the impression that he was going to fulfill the request, um, because I obviously had notified him of such, and I still have nothing. I still have nothing. I have had no response since. And, and to be honest, none of this really makes any sense. I mean, I, um, it's either a case of incompetence, outright lying, you know, corruption, a mixture of all three. I don't know. And it's, it's, um, hopefully, um, this will motivate the individuals to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's the liaison?
For Rocco?
Uh, no, not for Rocco. For the authority.
That's me. First I'm hearing of it.
Okay. You look, work the rock and see. Okay, we're going to have, uh, Mr. Mersky look into that. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
The same, there ain't nobody down here but, when the horse get out of the barn, I promise you this place will be loaded out in the hall. People just don't understand that they got it going on and don't know it. I'm, uh, y'all been keeping me awake at night, you know? I get to thinking about some of the things you're doing, you're not doing, and I just can't sleep. You keep me awake. Not only y'all, school board too. We're not getting our monies worth. You know, that thing up there in Missouri, and this thing in Cleveland, this last one was like, boy, they, police shot. I asked y'all down, back down the road, I said, "How are you training your policemen?" But I see now how you're training them to kill up black folks. That's all. It's worse now than it was back when I was a boy, back in the sixties. But I tell you what, when the chickens come home to roost, you'll understand things then. You think that what's going on don't affect y'all. You're not safe until I'm safe. You think you're safe? You're not safe. Your families are not safe. What's going on? Seem to be a vendetta against black folks across the country. Young black men, boom, boom. You don't go out there and try to find out what went on. Oh, he black. You get out of the car shooting. That, God gonna take care of that in his time. I promise you. I promise you, God will take care of that in his time. You're supposed to be adults and, you're supposed to be educated people. But a trillion wrongs don't make one right. Killing up these, these are God's peoples too. The, the pigment of the skin is just dark, that's all. This still guards people. And y'all don't act like it. I'm not just talking about y'all now. You're supposed to be the leaders. The, uh, political field, the political world ain't nothing but a sewer. Like, down there, where the plan is down there, it ain't nothing but a sewer. And that's a shame. It's supposed to be leaders down there in Washington. Across the street over there upstairs, you're supposed to be a leader. Your heart's going to feel it one day. Don't you feel bad to hear that somebody done shot an eleven-year-old kid? The kid got a little toy gun? Well, why don't they quit making toy guns then? Get out shooting. Don't, don't get out trying to find nothing. Oh, just getting out shooting. That guy in that Walmart or wherever that he was, he had that air rifle. Police come in and shot. Is there a vendetta against us? Must be. But I promise you, God gonna take care of it in his time. We go to war, we're up front. My uncle was telling me one time, he's dead now, he said, "When they came back over, say, the black had to go to the back, and here they were bringing some German prisoners over, and they was calling them niggas. Y'all got to go to the back. They're prisoners of war, and they're prejudiced. They're treated better than we are." Oh, y'all don't know how God love you. You're still living. You know, nobody killed you yet, but y'all been killing us like we're flies. Now you're killing the cream of our crop, our young peoples, our babies. We're taking care of foreign babies, and we're killing ours. God is going to take care of that in his time. I know y'all think I'm just blowing hot air. Y'all can't see no further than your nose if you can see that far. You got to look over. You got to get out of the box and look back. When you look in the mirror, what do you see? I'm doing good. You're not doing good until you're doing right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council. My name is Gary Horton. I reside, or I'll give, address two zero four six East Nineteenth Street. I'm here this morning to encourage council again, uh, on a concept of hope zones versus what we see are deficits of hope in neighborhoods here in Erie. And to encourage council again to reach out to John Haran and find out what is the housing authority doing that is so successful? What kind of policies? Why do their policies work? So that this body can start articulating policies that give hope to the people of Erie, that in the current development that we see, the planned development that we see actually provides an opportunity of training and employment for people from certain census tracts and zip codes in the city of Erie, which you were elected to represent? What kind of policies can council articulate to developers at Gannon, at Erie Insurance, at EMTA, at the Hotel, at Mercyhurst, at the Redevelopment Authority? What is John Haran doing that works? And how can we turn these decrepit, crime-laden, drug-infested neighborhoods that have people living in them to give them an opportunity of hope, an opportunity to have a job, to pay taxes or pay the taxes that are about to be increased? What kind of hope can you give them? What kind of policies? Hope zones versus deficits of hope? Even if you analyze, I mean, you see work going on all around us even today, doing analysis of who is working there. Are they people from neighborhoods and census tracts in Erie? Should they be? Should some of them be? When they close the street? When they inconvenience all of us, when we pay for the street reconstruction? We have leverage here that I'm not seeing council using. I don't see the city using when your Section Three report comes back with zeros. With zeros. Some of you didn't even know what a Section Three report was. I asked the city for a Section Three report last December. I got it in August. It has zeros. That's a leveraging point. If not council, who? I don't hear it at Erie Together, Erie Tomorrow, Erie Yesterday, Destination Erie, Develop Erie. None of them talk about the human aspect, the human aspect. Hope. No one wants to invest in hope. Well, city council. If you don't help us get the training and the jobs at the, in the current and future development, who will? Who will? Who'll speak out for us? To provide alternatives to just a police-only approach? To help build trust in neighborhoods? Where the police are on the front line and work every day, the police would benefit where the people have hope. Income inequality is a major challenge we face in our community. I'd like to see city council have policies that articulate that they understand that and provide the human aspect. Hope zones versus neighborhoods where there's deficits of hope. In, in closing, I'd like to ask also this question. If the administration is not interested in partnering with the local job effort for kids for the summer, will city council do it? Shouldn't you be a part of it? Shouldn't you give young people hope? That you're a part of it, that you believe in it, and that you don't come with a defensive position trying to describe why you don't want to do it or, or to make the people believe that, "Oh, city council doesn't want to do it." And you're steady saying, "Oh, we're doing A, B, C, D." Can you join that effort? Would you be a part of that, creating, expanding hope for young people for the summer while you're contemplating budget? You're going to raise the taxes on people and give the people something? And last, does the city council have a position on body armor for public safety officials? It's a national discussion. Is it in your two thousand and fifteen-year budget? And are you seeking, um, federal funds to perhaps help bring that to Erie? Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Horton?
Yes, sir.
I will get with you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Here are none, Mrs. Robey.
Ordinance is for first reading. Council file number fifteen nine oh one, and ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year 2015, beginning on January first, 2015, and ending on December thirty-first, 2015. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the council file ordinance number fifteen nine oh one, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan? Mrs. Rancunzo?
Mr. President? If I could just mention on these two items regarding to the, um, tax rate and the budget, these are first readings so that we have a vote under, um, on record, but we will be having our budget sessions, and these can change between first and second reading. I just want to make sure the public knew that. Gentlemen, can you take your discussion outside, because I can't hear myself think up here? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, continuing the roll call, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council written, adopt council file number fifteen nine oh one by a seven, nays zero on first reading. Council file fifteen nine oh two, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2015, and ending December thirty first, 2015. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Winarsky. That council file number fifteen nine oh two, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number fifteen nine oh two by a seven, nays zero on first reading. That takes us to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda. Second?
Do we, we have a second? Uh, any separations? With no separations, we go forward. Ms. Robey?
All right, voting on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. And that takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robey.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, do we want to start with committee reports? Uh, Mr. Murfsky, want to go first?
Thank you, just a few things to report. While it's in litigation, I don't want to talk too much about, uh, the Otters, but just to, to throw my support behind the Otters staying in Erie. Um, I think that hockey in, in this town is very important, and especially professional and semi-professional sports bring a quality of life to our city, um, and gives it that big city atmosphere and those quality of life issues that, that people have come to expect. So, um, you know, if that does not work out, I hope that we're able to secure a hockey team for our arena. Um, with its recent renovations, it's important that we get as much use out of that as possible. Just to note a personal privilege, um, my wife and I are chair couple, co-chair couple of the Barber, uh, Christmas Ball. It's the fiftieth anniversary of the Barber Ball next Saturday, December thirteenth, at the Bayfront Convention Center. Um, if anyone's interested in attending, barberinstitute.org is the website where you can purchase tickets, or you can call the Barber National Institute for those tickets. And, um, finally, I just wanted to, um, you know, ask, remind everyone during the, um, winter season here to please be careful on the roads, be safe when you're driving. It's oftentimes, um, the weather conditions change on a matter of minutes, and, um, you know, just be safe on the roads. I know everyone's in a hurry this time of year, but be careful where you're going. And, um, the streets department, we do our best to, uh, get, get those streets plowed and salted. So, um, that's it for, for my report. Thank you.
We started with Ms. Mercer. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, very short report today. Um, uh, this Friday, we have a, I'll be attending a meeting, um, for the city of Erie Comp Plan on the Advisory Committee. And, um, there were many submissions received for the comp plan by consultants, I think twenty-nine. But we'll be reviewing the consultant RFP proposals, uh, at this meeting. And, uh, I'll try to keep everybody, um, up on the future reports on what, uh, what's going on with the plan as we go forward. But, uh, again, I think very important for the city with our first comp plan. As was mentioned earlier, I believe, uh, budget sessions, we, our budget sessions come up today and also Monday and Tuesday. And then I did want to note that we have a, um, study session tomorrow night on the Landlord Inspection Program, uh, five-thirty at the council chambers to review the current status of the program. Uh, and that's it for my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I want to do was, uh, thank all our local entities, the nonprofits, local businesses, the food banks, the soup kitchens, in this past week who provided dinners for, uh, some of our citizens. Fortunately, uh, we, it is needed in our community, but fortunately, there are entities out there that can provide it. And, uh, I was fortunate enough to help provide some of it with one of the nonprofits I worked for. And, uh, I just want to thank those businesses once again, just for, uh, helping our community for those at this Thanksgiving season. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, I wanted, first, um, I don't have an official report in relation to authorities or liaison assignments, uh, but connected to that, I want to take a moment to, uh, I guess I'll, I'll say apologize. This has been a really crazy year for me, uh, personally and professionally outside of here, and I have not, um, been as interactive with some of my liaison assignments as I would have liked to have been or have been in the past. But with that said, um, uh, in this coming year, we'll absolutely, um, have made some, some adjustments, and so absolutely be much more involved in, um, I mean, getting a lot of information. I give pertinent information as I get it, don't get me wrong, but, uh, as far as attending a lot of the meetings, just with my work schedule and personal schedule just isn't, this year has been really challenging. So I just wanted to kind of say that, it's kind of felt like, you know, sometimes you know you're elected to do something, or you're hired to do something, and you can't always do what you want, as much as you want. And people have a high expectation of us, sometimes unrealistic, but at the same time, an expectation nonetheless. So, uh, that's kind of my, uh, moment that I wanted to give on that. But even greater than that, we, we heard a citizen talking, uh, about our police and the state of public service, in particular, police service around the country. You know, we have a lot of bad things happen, you know, in the world. A lot of bad things happen. You talk about Ferguson, you talk about, you go back in history, a lot of bad things have happened in this country and globally. But I don't think it's fair to make general statements, um, like, you know, like police trying to kill all the black people, or police trying to kill all the white people, or police trying to kill all the foreigners, or police trying to kill all the women. Police can't stand the kids. I don't think that's fair. Are there areas of improvement? Absolutely, in every area, from the police department to city council, to the citizens' behavior, outside of, you know, in, in, in society and in the community. So I, I just, you know, it's important that we give, any coin that's legitimate has to have a heads and a tails. There's two sides to stories, and often there's three, that your perspective, my perspective, and somewhere in the middle, it's pretty much more of the truth. But finally, I just wanted to say that. But here's my issue, and, and this is a big issue for me, being a young, black man, African-American man, whatever politically or inpolitically correct term you want to use, um, there are many more young black men killing young black men than any police officers in this country. And so for us to have a discussion about the state of our young black youth, or youth in this community, or, or around the country, in particular, black, young men, um, we've got to have that home discussion, that domestic, young black men are killing young black men discussion. And that needs to stop. I was in a funeral last week for a young man who was shot in, in town about two weeks ago, week and a half ago. Watching his mother agonize, and his grandmother laying all over the church, and there were probably two hundred and fifty young people in the room, from like fifteen to twenty-five. Most of them were more like sixteen to twenty. Some of the, you know, just great potential, but are being just caught up in things that are so much beneath them. Uh, you're mad at you, and you live on the West Side, I live on the East Side, I live on Eighth and Wallace, you live on Thirteenth and Wallace, or, I mean, I know I'm really, being really preachy, I guess, this morning, but when that citizen mentioned that, my, my heart just went out, because it's not that police don't value, or Council doesn't value. The sad part about it is that many of our young people don't value their own life, so it's easy to take the life of someone else when you don't value yourself. I don't know how we fix that, I don't know how we deal with that, except we continue to tell kids, and each of us try to mentor someone, or each of us show in some way how important our young people are, um, in the community. And we can't really do it from behind this desk, we've got to, and/or from behind our offices, or our cubicles and our businesses. We've got to get out in the community and let people, these young people know, they are valuable, they are important to us, and their life means something. And that's going to sound really preachy, but there's a passage in scripture, and I'll close with this, that says, "You have to love your neighbor as yourself." Right? But if you don't love yourself, how can you love anybody else? So let's just work together to try to help people love themselves, so that that love can shed abroad and be given to other people. Thank you, Mr. President, for my sermon. I'll pass the offering basket now.
Very well said, very well said. Councilman.
Uh, the only report, I had met with my liaison assignment, the Chief of Police, and, uh, that's pretty much what I did over the holiday. No report outside of that.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, um, no real report, just wanted to say, look forward to the budget sessions. We, um, obviously will be dealing with a proposed tax increase of the point eight mils, about seven percent tax increase, so we'll look very closely at the budget and see if there's any way we can, uh, reduce that tax increase, and look forward to working with everybody together on that, um, budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to reiterate on, uh, and collaborate on the, uh, statements made by just about everyone, and, uh, especially the concern of Mr. McDonald. I believe the President of the United States may have heard his plea, because he's seeking money to get vests for, a camera vest, for every, uh, police officer in, in the United States. It's a lot of money, and I hope it goes through. So, uh, Mr. McDonald, i-if you're listening, you can, uh, tell God that, uh, the President hurried you, and he gonna do something about it. And, and that's something, uh, that's, uh, well-needed, based on what's going around, uh, in the United States. But I also want to congratulate our police department on a job well-done, on solving, solving, uh, many of the crimes in a short period of times. They're working very hard, they are in a dangerous situation. Uh, we haven't had the type of, uh, situations that has occurred, uh, Cleveland, and Missouri, and Ferguson, and I hope we don't. Curtis was correct, uh, there's black-on-black crime, but there's also white-on-white crimes. Uh, there was statistics given, uh, last week, it's just about even. Uh, but we don't hear about it, uh, all the time in the white community, but, uh, white men are killing, white boys, and, and black men are killing black men. I'm not sure what the answer is, but there's something we can all do, I'm not sure what that is. But you go with your heart, you go with your feelings. And, uh, that's something, uh, our summer league, uh, work on. We've been able, along with the city administration, to bring a lot of white youth, black youth, Hispanics, African youth, together without any confrontation. And if sports, and with some educational programs within the programs, that's just a little piece of the puzzle. And I want to thank all the sponsors, and especially administration, uh, for their support. But it's just a small piece. Uh, a lot of it is at home, or lack of home. We've been brought up, uh, in different times and different eras, and those of us who are a little older, uh, we have to understand that times has changed, the mentality of the youth, uh, have changed. The respect that you and I gave to our parents and neighbors, uh, it seems to have gone. We have to get that back some way, somehow. I don't know how, other than getting involved. And so as, as a member of Council, uh, we're, we're gonna do something, we just don't know what we need to do right now. And I'm a believer, yes, jobs are important, but jobs is not going to solve the problems of killing one another. They aren't killing each other about jobs, it's about other things. But right now, we have a task ahead of us, we're gonna move on and go into our budget session and do our due diligence.
Teresa? Administration?
Thank you, Mr. President. I trust that everybody had a wonderful, blessed Thanksgiving, um, with their families. Want to remind everybody that the Erie Otters and the Erie Bayhawks are, of course, playing at the Erie Insurance Arena throughout the winter season. Great family-friendly entertainment, um, as we gear up for the holidays, um, this Friday from five until eight. Downtown delights will take place in Perry Square. Um, Mayor Senate will turn on the lights in, um, Perry Square just after six o'clock. There'll be free horse-drawn carriage rides, um, photos with Santa in the Boston store. Um, the Erie Downtown Partnership, UPMC Health Plan are huge sponsors of the event. Um, it's a great, again, family-friendly event, Erie Ice Carvings will be there, um, the Lake Effect Hoop Troop, um, will have a presence as well. So caroling and singing around Perry Square, um, this Friday, again, from five until eight. And, um, we hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from Mrs. Robey?
No report today, Mr. Brennan.
No report? Meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourns at nine fifty. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murfsky, Mr. Winarsky. Yeah, they're right here.